All right, so we'll start Oak Ridge Plan Commission workstation today, Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, 6:00 PM. Would you do the roll call, please?
Okay, great. Your vote?
Yeah.
Fisher Anderson? Mr. Goldman?
Here.
Mr. Carl?
Here.
Mr. Loos?
Here.
Mr. Metta?
Here.
All right, so next item is public comment. Do we have any?
My name is Mary Withrow. I live at 76718 Eagle Loop in Oak Ridge. I have some thoughts on your plans for rezoning Oak Ridge and specifically Oak Meadows. And the reason I'm bringing it up now is because I believe you're still planning. And I discovered a few things that I think you probably need to know. In the February 18th public meeting, some issues came up that I believe should be given consideration. This whole zoning idea for our small city is not mandated by the state legislation for middle housing. However, that legislative mandate is mentioned in the HNA associated documents that both times. Why? Again, there is no mandate for a city our size. The reasons why the planning commission is zealously promoting higher density housing throughout Oak Ridge when there is no actual requirement should be examined more carefully. Is there no room to refine engineering firm suggestions which seem to apply more to an urban, dense and populated area to fit our area? At the P and Z planning commission public hearing of February 18, one commissioner, after having heard many concerns about siding higher density low having, after having heard many concerns about siding higher density, low income housing developments in Oak Meadows, commented that he didn't understand why everyone thinks this is all about low income housing. I'd like to share why I have made this conclusion. In a personal conversation with said commissioner and on another occasion with her mayor, each said, and I'm trying to quote the best I have been able to from memory, "Oak Ridge desperately needs low income housing." When asked where these people are living now, neither could or would say. Mr. Zilster opened the January 7th work session with comments about having started this whole process after a call to Jacob Fox at Homes for Good. He confirmed that they discussed the need for higher density zoning in Oak Ridge in order to accommodate homes for good projects. The U of O students project also very clearly showed a partnership with Homes for Good and more specifically illustrated a higher density, low income housing project for Oak Meadows. These coincidences lead me to believe that this is exactly what this rezoning project is truly about. I have examined the current zoning definitions for R1 in Oak Ridge and the proposed R1 and R2 changes. The current Oak Ridge R1 and R2 definitions are pretty broad and include things that really are not excuse me, include things that really are not residential. Daycare facilities, boarding houses, clinics, and commercial greenhouses, to name a few. I am fond of planning commission for wanting to get that cleaned up. However, I see a push to be less transparent about some things. I transcribed and I'm attaching the transcription on how I wanted to read it. Mr. Zilster's explanation about how this whole project started from the YouTube recording from the January 7th work session, some of the audio was garbled, but I was able to get the gist of it. One portion stood out to me as particularly disturbing. Certain types of higher density development in a certain zoning rule requires special steps to issue building permits. Mr. Zilster wants to make it as easy as possible on himself and developers to issue permits without any public interest. Why is the extra step of a developer having to plan a proposal to the Wayne County Planning Commission for a multifamily building or manufactured home park that needs a special permit of bad faith? Doesn't the public deserve to be informed and to have input on developments of this type? The HNA recommends all sorts of goodies to entice these developers to build, which include property tax reductions and reduced subsidized or nominal permit fees. I asked, what is the actual benefit to Oak Ridge? Who will cover the costs initially for these services? And once these incentives expire? In the public hearing on February 18th, a commissioner asked why CCRs were not taken into consideration when it came to building permit issue. It was explained to her that permits are only issued based on zoning restrictions, period. I do understand why that advocates. However, over to the tiny city, the city planner slash permit issuer knows which subdivisions have CCRs. In fact, the city acknowledges them on its own website to attract new businesses to the area. I understand he doesn't have to care about them. And I know this is probably a stretch, but wouldn't it go a long way toward mutual respect between the taxpayer public and city officials and save a lot of trouble if the CCRs were at least acknowledged in some way in some way during the initial permitting conversation? Something on the order of, there are CCRs in that subdivision. Here's the contact information of someone who can tell you about that. Tell us about, tell us what kind of public record we can make besides recording at the county level to ensure these restrictions are not ignored. Perhaps the city could update the website information to include copies of the permanent CCRs for those areas that have them to include with the subdivision maps that are there. I am 100% certain we would be happy to provide those copies. I thank the commission for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I appreciate an additional opportunity to speak on this because I think it's so important.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, yeah. J. S. Forte, 48174 West Oak Road. So when I was here at the last meeting, I introduced some testimony addressing the, the numbers in the housing needs analysis. I found some serious mistakes. And if I didn't convey that well enough to you guys, I appreciate the opportunity. So I went home and got the help of an AI platform to do in the analysis. And all the analysis we did was within the housing needs analysis, use their data. With the exception of, we added some US Census, Census historical data. So I'm gonna read a summary of of the AI analysis. I did make a few extra copies if anybody would like to follow along as I read the summary.
Sure, we'd all like to follow along with you.
Maybe I just have four or five, so there's less on us.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I set these here and I had a few out. Is this? Yeah, so there's three kind of sets. I'll explain those to you. Yeah, I have one more.
Could be me.
Okay.
Mine looks different than that.
Yeah, so this page that's stapled together is taken right out of the housing needs analysis. And, and we do reference a couple of applications. And then the summary analysis, which is what I'm gonna read. And the big thick ones is the full analysis, the AI. Page one and two. Big thick guy. AI establishes a population, how, how populations forecasted for a 20-year model. And it also established the, the forecast of 755 new residents, which is what the housing needs analysis projects. But it also gave us the real number of 416 residents. So right off the bat, there's a huge mistake in mathematics. And if you look at the analysis, they use a, an average annual growth rate of 0.57. It's in the analysis, in the housing needs analysis. It says it right on page five. And when you do the math of 0.57% growth rate over 20 years, you get 416 new residents. So it never was 755, just it never was. On pages 3A and 3B in the big thick analysis. It explored the discrepancies that I just talked about on page two. You can look at AI, how AI analyzed that data came to the 416 new residents over 20 years. On page is 4A and 4B of this document. It analyzes the graph that you have here from the housing needs analysis. And AI struggles to make sense of their modeling and suggests that we look within the HNA or data that could explain these discrepancies. It just couldn't make sense of them. If you look I didn't even include this. It's when I was asking AI questions, but page five of the housing needs analysis. Second paragraph. It says the city of Oak Ridge reached a record high population of 3,223 people in 2020. And then if you go down to the bar graph, the HNA document starts, yes, 2020. 20-year projection of 3,458. I actually thought that the first time I looked at it, that doesn't make any sense at all, and it doesn't. But that kind of prompted me to look and get a little bit deeper. So pages 5A and 5B. The big one, look at historical population data found in US Census. Both a long range look from 1970 to 2020, which pretty much showed a flat line. And then I felt it was important to look at the 2020 to 24 data because that's part of the HNA's analysis. It kind of gives us a look after four years at their projections to grow and kind of see if they're lining up. They don't line up. Between 20 and 24, or 2020 and 2024, Oak Ridge lost 82 people. And in the HNA analysis, they were projecting a steady growth at 70%. So that's, that's a four-year window into a 20-year analysis, and their model just starts falling apart. We're gonna, they would be required to you know, have even higher growth rates than 0.57 from this point on to reach their goal of 755 people. So pages 6A and 6B is a look at how we get a number of housing that's needed by looking at projected number of new residents. The HNA is projecting 755 people. The real number is 416 people. So AI calculated that yeah, they use a rate, a rate to apply using a rate of the number of persons per household. So if you want to use the 755 number, divide that by 2.05. And and that, that matches their projected number of housing units 368. But we know that's not true because the real number of projected residents is 419, 460, which, which equals 203 housing units. So HNA said we needed 368. We actually need 203. And it comes down smaller, as you'll see. Pages 7A, 7B, 7C take a deeper dive into why they use a figure of 2.05 people per household. As current census data shows in their own document, a rate of 2.31 in 2010 and a rate of 2.36 in 2020. So for that 10-year span, it was ticking upward. And they, they threw out this 2.05. And AI couldn't find any reason to do that except that it matched it matched their 755 residents and, and 368 housing units. It wasn't based on census data, even though they provided the census data over a 10-year period. They didn't use it. AI noted that this was an interesting inconsistency. And AI concluded that that was a possible forecast adjustment or error. And he does mention that there's a possibility, maybe you guys know more than I do, that there's a projected increase of single migrants. So that was really the only thing other than just an error that he but then again, it's not listed in the housing needs analysis. Pages A, B, and C, these pages analyze the assumption that I made that all of the calculations, inconsistent modeling, and mistakes all lead towards building the highest number of housing units possible. AI starts by saying that my observations are sharp and not at all unreasonable. So you know, nobody wanted this consultant agency to be off so much. It's making your job much more difficult. But yeah, it is. And that's the fact. Then let's see. Then in A, B, and C, AI goes on to list all of the inconsistencies you can see it in. And concludes that yes, they all point to inflated housing unit numbers. And suggests that it could reflect intentional bias skewing towards development. And he, he, she, whatever, recommends checking of the document, hence that stakeholders benefiting from higher numbers. Yeah, so that's, that's a question that I can't answer. And I think you guys have all been working on this much longer than I have. And talk to people that I haven't talked to developers, whatever. But I think, God, it's a fair question to ask, given the mistakes and stuff.
Mr. Sorel? We have three, you have three minutes to, to, so yeah, can you wrap that up?
Can I borrow your three minutes?
Yeah. And, and just, okay, and just for the record too, would you please state the AI platform that you use for funding?
Yes, Brock, yeah. Or GROK? Yeah, it's, it's free right now. It's really the only reason I use it. Pages 9A, B, and C. I ask my final question. Given the city of Oak Ridge will be tasked with implementing a 20-year plan for housing needs, can you index the reliability of the housing needs analysis? So after all of our discussions, he's got a pretty clear view of the housing needs analysis. He says the HNI scores a 30% reliability index. So that 368 housing units needed to meet the demand of growth has a 30% reliability index. And I think the point I'm trying to make is that you know, given the, the scope and breadth of the mapping changes, the zoning changes that are currently, you know, being considered, that's a pretty weak foundation to base all those changes on. So I'm glad that you guys are taking a, a little time here to take a, maybe a little closer look. I hope that you'll when you have time to read through this, he not only provides, you know, solid numbers, but more depth than I could ever express to you in, in how he analyzes all this. And then one last thing. I'm a big proponent of entry-level homes to buy for young people or anybody. I fully support an effort to improve, increase entry-level homes in Oak Ridge. People could get out of renting and buy their first home, even if it was small, whatever. My first home was a trailer, a trailer park, but it was the smartest buy I ever made. Just to let you know where I'm going from.
All right, sir. Thank you. We appreciate your input.
Question?
Do you want to ask a question?
I do. I have a few questions I want to ask you.
Mr. Sora?
This is Forte.
Forte.
This is Forte. I had, I had a few questions.
Yeah, good.
Are you up for that?
Absolutely.
So first, I want to thank you for taking the time and effort to, to research this and put it together and present it to us. It didn't just, it just didn't fall off a chair. There's a lot of work in it here, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm curious if you think housing availability drives economic development. In other words, if you have the housing, the business will come. Or if the business comes and then you, then you get the house. Yeah. What do you think?
Well, I mean, it's nice to have a little, a little head start on the housing, just in case something comes along. But yeah, I, I think that in 1970, I was in the sixth grade at Westford Elementary School. You know, I thought of this when I was looking at the long-range population data. We had, there was this really nice store there in Westford, Meat Market in Oak Ridge. We had three supermarkets. We had a bowling alley, movie theater. There was a nice jewelry store in town. The population was 3,400 and change. Population right now is 3,200 and change. Anybody that wanted a job in 1970 could get a job very easily. The logging industry was rolling. So even with, you know, great economy here, we had a population of 3,400. Since that time, you know, a lot of the homes been bought by people that have to drive Eugene to work or, you know, whatever. But yeah, I, I guess I don't have a clear answer to your question.
So, so the other thing, as, as you were speaking, I was thinking what would happen if Amazon located a distribution center or industrial park or something like that? If, if, if a major employer, now I don't know that there's anything on the horizon. I don't know if that's even realistic. Yes, but if that were to happen, the housing needs would blow up, wouldn't they?
Yeah, so in the housing needs analysis, they claim that Oak Ridge has 245 acres of buildable land.
Yeah.
That hasn't been built yet. That's a lot of homes, a lot of potential homes. You know, if it was real big, you could obviously expand the urban growth boundary. There's viable options for doing that. But yes, one of my problems with the kind of the breadth of the current proposal and all the remapping, rezoning is you know, just looking at the historical trend, it's, it's pretty much been a flat line for 55 years. And to to kind of go and do an extreme makeover of Oak Ridge is, and that's what it looks like might happen and really upset a lot of people. You could take what I presented tonight. Basically cut projected 368 homes. So we need, the real number is 155. So if you had any desire at all to maybe take another look at this and dial it back and mitigate some of the the stress and uncertainty by people in certain neighborhoods, you would certainly have a foundation for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay.
It is Bob Withrow. I live at 76718 Eagle Loop in Oak Ridge. If I may speak to your question about Amazon and a potential warehouse or any large employer. In our neighborhood alone, we have room for over 100 homes or that subdivision to be finished as it was originally planned. And I think in materials that I presented at the last meeting, there was a copy of that original plan. Not all of those lots are planted. The streets aren't built, but that was the plan. I'm sure that Mr. Ness would be happy to see that plan come to fruition and to, to know that there would be lots that he could sell. Even now, there are just planted and not even built on, close to 30 lots in the neighborhood that are ready to build. So in terms of increasing capacity in that manner, So in terms of increasing capacity in that manner, we're there. And also, um, your question about what comes first, chicken or the egg? I think that you need to have jobs. Because just throwing money into housing, we have people here that are willing to work. And I think one of the things that came out of the survey was that what people really want is a job. They're not looking for a handout. This is a proud unit. I've learned that. I walk where I sub at the high school. I walk around and I look at the trophies in the case and the pictures of the football team, forty kids suited up. This is a proud community, a proud history. Now, let's just chuck it all out the window. Just to bring you a load from house. So with that, I have some remarks. Um, I will not say everything because I would use up more of my time than I have, but I would like everything in it in fact. If that's possible. Um, I would like to thank the two commissioners who were at City Hall for last time's planning commission.
One clarification. This is not a public, public hearing style record.
Okay. Well, I would just, if somebody, or I'd be happy to give this to the chair for copies. You're welcome.
We definitely attach it in minutes of meeting.
Okay.
That's not a bad idea.
If you want it entered in public record, you can bring it back on me.
Okay, well, I'll be back on the team, of course. Um, it couldn't have been easy to sit here and listen to a lot of people complain uh, about the work being done. Um, and I applaud you guys for being here and, and face some of the music as it were. I also applaud you for asking the questions that you asked. There are a lot more reasons to ask a lot more questions. Mr. Sordo, uh, kind of took my breath away. Uh, that's why I don't really feel like I need to say a whole lot other than you know, how did we get here? And I think, uh, you know, after I wrote this, it came to mind that, uh, Stephen Covey's rule number two was, uh, or habit number two was all again with the end in mind. And I think that's what happened. There was an end in mind. The desire was low income housing. And we did whatever we could to get. And I think what Mr. Sordo found, uh, using the AI platform, that was a brilliant idea. Um, I would not have thought to do that, but it makes sense. Because the math doesn't work. And I just, I, I would ask you guys, since we're at a pause, ask more questions. Find out really why, because we have the capacity to absorb an awful lot of people. And I think, you know, you ask what businesses want. Businesses want employees, first and foremost, they want readily available employees, but they also want other things. They want schools, shops, they want services. Um, anybody moving here. We have outdoor recreation. We are in the middle of outdoor recreation, whatever you want. Uh, and that is extremely attractive because there aren't a whole lot of places where, you know, we're kind of modest meat, to truth be told. But we came here, took us every dime we had, but we came here. This is a beautiful place. It's a wonderful place to live and I would just hate to see that spoiled when the potential is there to attract so much more. And bring in things that will contribute to the community, not take away. So, um, I just, I urge you to keep asking the questions, especially now. How did we get here? And what was really the goal? Um, and why are the numbers so far up? Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any public comments?
Um, my name is Stan Malam and I live at four eight fifty nine Mission Street. Um, this probably didn't sound a little bit like an apple chamber in here. And I might be beating a dead horse. However, here I go. The housing needs analysis says there is capacity currently for one thousand one hundred new single family homes. But according to analysis, the analysis, they only need two hundred over the next twenty years. But according to the H and A, they have a deficit of housing types as in duplexes, fourplexes, townhomes and apartments in the affordable housing types for middle and low income families. So it will attract people from out of town basically in form of, um, low income housing. So what we'll end up getting is section eight housing with people coming from Eugene to live here so they can live in low income housing. Um, and I'm not really for that at all. Translation, they feel the need to bring in section eight housing developments to force us in here like sardines. That was obviously not the goal of the folks moving here in the first place. This is supposedly designed for low and middle income families. But by turning Oak Ridge into the, a little Eugene, you are forcing the middle income people into low income because some one has to bear the burden of more welfare programs, grants and section eight, cost money from the taxpayers, including low income families. There's a vicious cycle of dragging everyone down to the same levels. I don't want to pay for brand new housing for people who in a lot of cases don't or won't appreciate it and have no accountability and can remain in this lifestyle for generations. I don't live in a brand new home. My home is neat and clean and well kept because I own it and have skin in the game. We have seen what some, not all, due to rentals. That is why no one wants to rent their property. And if they do, the reason why the rent is so high is because of current inflation, rising prices of repairs, insurance, mortgage prices, et cetera. People can't afford it. Landlords can't afford it. People complain because these money grabbing landlords charge too much, but they can't help it. They're taxed and burdened to death. So the solution is not to increase the tax burden on all people either through inflation or higher taxes, but to lower the squeeze on the taxpayers by making people accountable for their actions. Welfare reform is in order, not pandering, buying their boats by enabling them with tax dollars, including welfare, grants and nonprofits. Anytime we hear the word smart city, affordable housing, let the buyer beware. In our case, it could be shoved down our throats. Welfare reform is needed. Drug testing, only real food should be allowed to be purchased with SNAP. A limit as to how long a person can remain on it and who is eligible. In my day, able bodied men were not allowed on. We need productive citizens that would give the economy going, not smart growth, which will get folks dependent on handouts. We have no jobs here. So we will attract people from Eugene to come for section eight housing. Eugene is probably salivating over this and so are the section eight developers. This will ruin Oak Ridge. We need personal accountability. One of the goals is to expand the tourism season. Currently with the interagency management teams, Big Fox, let it rip until the snow flies policy, that would be impossible. Because while they claim full suppression, there's anything but that. First, they don't put it out, more likely. And hopefully that will change with this administration. So the goals seem the goals seem to in these goals seem to unite with the agenda twenty thirty. Uh, UN Agenda twenty thirty to become a vibrant and thriving community by twenty thirty. Themes and goals. Ensure safe community, responsive government, strong economy, community with ability. All that sounds great. Goal, goal one, save communities, internal have a working police force, fire department, ambulance. This is what we need. But there are things that are beyond our control and those will be we need, and we actually, what we need to do is pass state laws and enforce the laws that we have currently. There are no enforceable laws against drug abuse in the streets. Drugs and homelessness is rampant with no accountability or enforcement. This has become a danger and a drain on resources for everyone except the nonprofits that enable and facilitate it. We should not encourage it by making them even less accountable and giving them section eight housing. Have you seen Compton? San Francisco, Portland, Eugene, Salem? Call to responsive government, deliver services we need. Yes, we need ambulance, police, fire. Infrastructure exists already for single family housing. We need, um, to manage finances efficiently by not going into debt and living beyond our means. Goal three, strong economy. Yes, we need push tourism.
Ma'am, the clock is, can you wrap it up?
I can start wrapping it up. Do you already know what your goal three is in your goal four? I will go to the when we have less taxes, less government and a vibrant economy, all ships rise. We can't accomplish that by building a bigger welfare state. We need all hands on deck. We have affordable, available housing, either for sale or for rent already. Let's keep our costs down, educate people, prepare and provide and help themselves and leave the zoning as it is. We need to take care of what we have without creating a bigger burden on the taxpayers. Mixing high density housing with low density housing in the community will destroy rural life here as we know it, creating an extension of Eugene, smart growth, smart city. But fifteen minutes, fifteen minute cities are being encouraged all across the country and around the world and is designed to end our rural way of life. Between section eight housing and the fire map, there's a speed shoved down our throats. We're either being burned out or priced out through extremely high fire insurance rates. Our biggest problem lies with the US Forest Service policies, not putting these fires out. Smart growth is not the answer, nor is it smart for rural America. We're being stripped of the reasons we moved here in the first place. We have a sobriety accountability problem in this country and a productivity problem and a spending problem, not a housing problem. We don't need a bigger welfare government state. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, moving on. Rick, you want to take us through the slides?
Sure. All right. So most of this we've already seen and we've already discussed, but uh, we are working under smart development principles, especially use the land and energy, police services, um, mixed use development and transportation. Most of these slides you've all seen already. And we already discussed H and A. Yes, Oak Ridge does have a plan to accommodate for single year attached houses in the next twenty years. Non-implant, don't promote that family housing to accommodate. Uh, the last twenty years, ninety five percent of the housing built, the single count of housing. One percent being townhomes. And the last year, we had no, nothing built larger than a let's say fourplex. We've struggled to imagine where yes, we already discussed the, uh, the projecting each from the H and A. Um, there's definitely some good points to write about that. I didn't have to admit I did inherit the H and A. Wordsworth. Um, but with, uh, some of the recommendations that we want to carry through, um, some of these do tie into state legislation. Uh, the, we don't some lands from Orlando are to increase capacity of multifamily residential and industrial parks. And you create new R three zoning districts so that we can have a place to actually develop something larger than a fourplex. So the process I want to introduce today is called weighted overlay. I don't know if y'all know what the overlay is, but it's also probably skewed building mapping. This is the tool that we're gonna introduce today and we'll finish today, but we'll talk about the inputs today. Basically, there's a lot of things that were made consider and try to place a value, uh, grading scale of one to five on the items of that we're considering. And at the end of the process, everything gets stacked together and then you have those values added up. We're gonna be able to have values based on multiple items. Um, hopefully what this will achieve is not place one set of criteria above the other, but tend to view them all equally. So what we're asking for you all as we go through this exercise is keep in mind a, a scale of one to five. I've already tossed some things out there. But that's what we're gonna do is we're gonna put together a weighted overlay map. Um, any questions on the mapping part before we get started?
When the highest roll?
Want to be roughs?
I'd say like is the most suitable.
I would be the highest. Yeah, yes. So, um, for starters, we start with all of them lands designated for residential. Um, that's what you see here on the map. Uh, these are the lands that are designated in the now remember, there is a difference between zoning and designation. The things that we're not talking about, the zone, I'm not talking about designation. So these are on plan designated areas. So we start with this, we have, uh, one thousand five hundred sixty three individual lots and seven hundred and four point one acres. Um, first of all, when we start talking about hazard, we want to remove some of the selection. So we remove the floodplain hazard. As you can see on the map, um, we are not recommending we remove everything that touches. If the floodplain touches the lot, that's not the case, but, um, where it causes a significant restraint or constraint um, on buildings. So for example, if it was more than fifty percent of a average parcel, that would be a significant constraint. Um, if you have a large parcel, uh, that's workable. Um, so after we remove that, we've dropped down fifteen hundred two individual tax lots and about six hundred and fifty six point four acres. Um, next we'll talk about slopes. So, uh, if you dive on slope and I'm recommending to remove everything with a twenty percent or greater slope from this selection as well, twenty percent, the number for that is uh, for Oregon building codes, twenty percent is where you really have to start getting into geotech reports, geotech studies, and it significantly increases the cost of any device. So if you're on a, a hillside, the cost of building on a hillside is, is greater. Anybody built on flatland or on a hillside, definitely contest to that. Um, so now we're down to
Twenty percent grade requires geological
Geotech studies.
Okay.
Yes, that's a, that's in found in the Oregon codes and in our local board at seven oh seven, our excavation rating.
I did want to make one comment on this map. I was, um, I noticed just, uh, in my neighborhood and areas that there are some larger lots that have, half, maybe half of it is less than twenty percent. I mean, and I know that you see these maps, there's also, you know, not as accurate, um, at a scale that you'd like. So I was just curious about, like, I know some of these larger parts, well, I just see like quite a few buildable um, lots that maybe have about half twenty percent.
They were, they were pulled from the selection or still on the selection.
They look like they were removed, like where there's white, um, kind of of the hillside, the white areas.
Okay.
Anyway, that would
I, I know it's partially packed it up. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that could be, we're gonna discuss that. I go back to the map and add that one back in.
Uh, yeah, I just
But that one was it was more than half.
Okay, yeah, I think there's, there might be, be similar. Again, that's just a math nerd of accuracy level thing.
If you want, we can revisit that. So, um, so we also need to just cleaning up the old profile now. There's a handful of parcels that are identified here that are not uh, designated residential, but nonetheless, today they have relatives along that. I think the best way forward is just to include them as residential and make those changes. I think the best way forward is just to include them as residential and make those changes in the map, change it to residential. And doing the, so there's already residents on it, it might as well be residential, regardless of the current designation. I just see that best fairway for. And this also ties into something we talked about. The eighteen being designated lands and not zoning them. And how we got to here. So. So that brought us back to the thirteen and thirty-four individual parcels. And this is where our starting link is. Everybody comfortable with where we've got to here? Questions on this? Terms?
No, I think that, I think that we're, Rick, I think that we're moving forward from where we started originally, which was. Who identified which person the cities could be supported by the existing infrastructure.
Right.
Right? And so. You know, I think that now, moving forward, we're taking into the basis is how we're, how the workability is of that with. With people involved, like building on slopes, you know, me coming into contact with. Public transportation needs, and so I think that we're moving.
So. The first item up for discussion is street classification. Um, the street classification came from our twenty twenty and the system plan. And just so that we're on the same page, we can go back to this one because some of our get it. We will need to discuss. So an arterial is a road designated to traffic entering and leaving to the urban area. Um, the main function is to, for arterials, is to efficiently move traffic. Through, although they also may provide access to adjacent land, so we do have two arterials in town, which we'll see in the next map. West Oak is one of them, I was engaged the other. Um, collectors are the street facilitator movement and by some degree of access to adjacent properties. While maintaining circulation and mobility for all users. Local streets are the, the local street is right back access to adjacent land uses. These streets offer the lowest level of mobility and consequently tend to be short, low speed facilities. And the shared streets are uh, low speed, low volume, but with that may be shared by pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. These streets simply will provide access to end of trip designation designations. One thing to highlight on this, which is gonna tie into a future. Uh, criteria is that shared streets, as it says here, are not. Are intended to be, or may be shared, doesn't mean that a shared street may not have a sidewalk. With with this designation. So. Now we have, these are, this is our designations. And. As we discussed earlier, we're gonna try to pour these from a one through a five, so in the idea of. Housing. We need to hone down on these, on these five little points. A major arterial. You know, and also sure the major arterial really benefits housing per se, because it's intended to move traffic through. So while at first you think that's a great road, let's put that at five, the best we got, but that's not really the purpose of the, of a major arterial. So I, I'm gonna. Draw a number, and if anybody wants to beat me to it, please do so, but I'm gonna put a major arterial at three. From one to five. Minor arterials, um, so, okay.
Question.
Yes.
And what are we? To rezone to which, or sorry, redesignate to which level?
Well, let's have the scoring at the end, we'll hope.
It's a criteria matrix, so.
Yes.
No, I get that, I just don't know what we're trying to.
We're trying to define the, the multiple sets of criteria that will all add up. So like, um, this arterial three will be added with. Um, numbers we get from sidewalks, we add with numbers we get from.
I understand the process.
I'm not understanding the question.
Yeah, um, I just think that, like, I would weight it differently for different goals in mind, right? And so like, if my goal is to put a large multifamily, I would. Think that that would be different from duplexes. And so like, where are we?
So the goal is to identify the best places for a higher density. That way, if we have a higher number for higher densities in the range of our scores.
Okay.
Uh, let's say just for example, we get a fifty or twenty.
Okay, so we're going for high density is what we're going for.
And then, and then those numbers that land in the middle would be more for middle densities, and those numbers land. Lower density, that's, yeah, one of the ideas of.
Some. So. What we're. For me, highway fifty-eight is not residential.
Exactly, that's exactly what.
Okay, but if you wanted to put an apartment complex off of highway fifty-eight. That's different than putting a single family. And so we're talking about a couple of different things here.
Right, so I would not, I would not recommend, and it's not residential, so those.
Right.
Parts were not even.
Okay.
I mean, you can't, I mean, it is, the code as it's written today and as it's proposed would allow for it. That's not really ideal. It's noise, noise pollution, light pollution. Not really ideal, so.
Right. But, Rick, are we? Doing the one through five, like, on all the different types of streets? Is that what you're trying to do right now?
Yeah, I'm gonna score them, and if we end up with the streets that have the same score, that's fine.
Well. I guess my question really was, are we? Or are we doing the one through five on street classifications and then sidewalks and then the bus route?
We're doing them on all of them, one through five on all of the criteria.
Um, but these other criteria don't have the same number of options.
And I should, so.
So I'm doing the work mathematically.
That's still one through five, the highest being five, the lower being one, so there's only two choices, you assign one of five as one of one. It doesn't, we don't have to hit every single one.
This is very subjective.
Yes.
The five is the most suitable for that.
I understand that part, I just. Would it be fair, if something like this, if something say R one and then R two and three? For each one? So like, like this.
So trying to.
Major arterial. Uh, for single family, or one.
Right, major arterial doesn't benefit any of the.
Right, but you know, for me, R two or R three, it might be three. Or major arterial.
I'd like to interject, I think when, the way I would look at this is like, the one is best suited for R one. The three therefore is best suited for R two, and the five is best suited for R three. So then the four and two, you actually have a gradation. Because maybe in two, well, this is suited for R one, but maybe there's also aspects of this that work well for both, so it gives you a little bit more. Uh, you tell.
Right, right, but what I'm trying to say is, it's gonna be to my brain. Say I'm gonna put one number on. Hold it.
Well, I think that, I think that. As commissioners, you can, you can grade it to whatever number you want, but you, that it's a conditional. Number based on how you interpret the data, right? And it's okay to, to give that number and then write down what your condition was, what, what, what prompted you to do that? So that when we come back later and we start looking at the aggregate scores across the board. We can start weighing in, well, maybe this was a conditional thought that we didn't think of. Right? So if you have those hesitations that are making, making you seem. To be elevating the score or lowering your score as you perceive it, then jot down why, why you thought that. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, because we're, we're a group of collaborative individuals. With different opinions, different backgrounds. And, and really, my goal here is to make sure that we function as a collaborative group. And have the ability to say what we think.
Okay, so are we each individually doing the one through five? Okay, that's I thought, we're as a group doing one.
Yeah, yeah, so I need to know what kind of numbers to plug into the system.
Okay.
And, you know, as we mentioned earlier, and I'm not. You know, we are trying to accommodate for. And this, we're not hiding the ball here, we are trying to accommodate for more. Intensive population or students, so those areas that most benefit the people are the areas. If we go, uh, one of the things to keep in mind, if we go back to some of the smart development principles. For this discussion, efficient use of land and interviewing resources, combat development, and infill patterns. Efficient use of public utilities, infrastructure, we get more bank for, I mean, every, every year we have to budget. Our, our water, waste water. We actually get better return rate return if we have within one linear. One linear line of those services, if we only have two homes on that. Our rate of return is much less than if we have twenty residents. So it also, that's the whole, one of the ideas of. Smart development principles is to how to better use your infrastructure, how to better use your resources. And that pays out for everybody, I mean, last time we're getting a huge water increase. For water upgrade project, that all went on the rated, um, on the backs of the great pairs. Those are some of the things you would try to consider during smart development. So and that goes a, a lot of ways for stores, the shopping centers, places and schools. They're going to, there's gonna be benefits to them as well with a more compact. You have, uh, your classes going out to get kids, you have fuel. If you're going ten miles, pick up two kids, virtually ten miles, pick up ten kids. Those are some of the ideas we're trying to achieve here. And then there is a whole urban versus rural conversation as well. We all know we live within an urban growth boundary. We are, we follow urban rules by state planning. And that's, that, and for state organ planning, the whole concept that was set up in nineteen seventy, seventy-one, was that. Uh, homes, people, businesses, industry is within urban growth boundaries. Save for farm and field for outside of the urban growth boundaries. That's how we have, have gone, what, fifty years now? Without the urban sprawl, we see some of our similar states having as well. So some of, those are some of the principles we're working within with Oregon planning, so. Put that out there, uh, without these type of principles. Urban sprawl would have taken over our forests or farming fields, just like it has in our states. So where, where we were trying to come up with some numbers, oh. All right, the number thing that, more questions, how does that work now with everybody? Yeah, okay, okay, so we were. Yes, street classifications. Um, the major arterial is highway fifty-eight. The purpose major arterial is to move people through. I. I'm not so sure that deserves a high score in this. When I'm losing people, so we're trying to meet people through their residences or to shopping or to somewhere. I have it listed at a three, uh, a minor arterial, we have one minor arterial, and that's. From First Street, oh, to Second, and then West Oak to the end of the city limits. Again, that one is, is meant to move people, while yes, it does function as a, the, the lower. Classification within, within the heart of a bridge is still, its purpose intent is to move people through. Now, this really is shown, once you start reaching the hill department of West Oak. You might. With that being said, any thoughts on numbers?
So I think that would apply to a three also.
Am I hearing anything else?
Well, I mean, I feel like some of that area is primary for high, uh. Density residential, um, you know, down on First Street, uh, I mean, I feel like that, that road has different characteristics, um. They change throughout that, that line.
Yeah, like from First Oak, I mean, you're absolutely right, I totally agree with that. In, in doing the, doing the process, I, I have no problem with. I think that went up. May, maybe from First Oak giving it a different number than from Oak to the edge of city limits. Any thoughts on that? I mean, I'm.
Yeah, you know, I mean, if, if you, you know, if we look at the, um. Basically. From. Say from the golf course down to Oak. Um, we, we look at the, uh, the, the ability to move out into that street. Um, it's, it's, it's view obstructed, right? And if we get down here to, on First Street, that's, that's the commercial zone. Um, for the uptown area, and, uh. Well, you know, crust, crust views are pretty much, there's nothing there, or could be built there, because it's passing over the railroad and the school, so. You know, I, I think that, uh, you know, if we're going to reclassify First Street, then that should be from Oak to Crestview. And, and that could carry a higher number because that could be functioning as a collector's street also.
I, okay, I absolutely, yes, I like that idea, so. The minor arterial, first Oak. You want to score it as a vector.
But I think that we can pull a number up to make it more suitable for a higher density of, of residential.
So the two outlined areas from Crestview to Rose, we're giving it a three. And then from Oak to the edge of city limits, we're giving it a three. And then from First to Oak, we're giving it whatever we decided vector gets, well.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you can just go from Oak, from First Street, from Oak to Crestview, really, I mean, going up. Uh, up, up to Second Street and then Second Street up to, to West Oak is pretty much the same, has the same. Same traffic issues that I feel, and it's difficult to see, it's difficult to, to judge, and. Once you drop off of West, uh, West Oak onto Oak, then you're back into the commercial zone. There's only the mortuary, there's the machine shop, and then there's the vacant lot, and then you have a bank for us straight.
Where, where you want, where you.
I'm just thinking, I'm just breaking it on the, uh, First Street, on the, from Oak to Crestview, because that's where it would be. More suitable for, for, uh. Designating it as an area that would support a higher, higher density. Residential, so that could carry like a four, or, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give it a five, but I would give it a four.
And would you? It kind of plays into the next, uh, little point, would, are you, are we comfortable giving a local a four?
We're talking about collectors right now?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Comfortable giving that to the employee?
I feel like collectors would be where five would be for higher. That's probably our best bet.
Or collectors would be more suitable for higher density?
Yeah.
I totally agree.
So, like, to the five?
Yeah.
Or eight? And local?
Three and a half? Can, can we get a point five sitting there? Three point five? Yeah.
Well, some, some of those are already in some of the highest density. The local. Yeah, there's not in the modern, in the city.
Right, there's not a lot of available ways, yeah, so. So did I hear, what, did I hear point five was?
So, so.
I was thinking three point five.
So I mean, I just want to make, ask a question here for you, Rick, is that, on this map. Is it excluding those areas that we have, uh, indicated are not supported by infrastructure?
Um, no. This map does not take infrastructure into consideration, we will get to that as we go.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear for everybody.
Because the, the reason I didn't put a restructuring here was because the, the idea behind that was. If it's already residential, it's already residence. It's already getting service, it's already getting service.
Right, I mean, that's, that, that's okay if it's carrying an R one designation, right? But if we're going for a higher density designation, then as we, we found, there, there is infrastructure in some areas of town that. A multi-density application, right? So I think that when we're talking about the, and the local streets, some of those local streets are in those areas. So I think that when we're talking about the, and the local streets, some of those local streets are in those areas that. We may have to condition that, that number to be for only those local streets that are. In areas that the infrastructure supports for higher density.
But that's what the weighted does is.
No, no, we're gonna have to wait local because there's parts of local that are really a one.
Well, that'll come in later in the map.
They never come to us more than a one.
Well, that, that'll get taken care of as other layers get added to the map, because it'll.
Okay, I was just bringing you now, so that when we get to that, we can think about. What I just said, because that's going to, that's going to wait that judgment greater than what we're waiting here.
Right, right, um, and as we go through all this. The automation, we, we fire the, the G I M program and then you see some of that played out.
Okay.
We try.
Yeah. So what do you think locals guys, fours?
I like three and a half.
Likes three and a half.
It depends on the local, if they do, I give it three, some of them.
I was thinking three or four, so we're gonna have something.
We'll be doing that.
Are we doing that?
We're doing that. All right, uh, share.
One.
Well, we do have shared streets that are already high density.
And shared streets are your, your, your last, your last portion. I mean, that's the, the shared street gets you into the neighborhood.
Yes, so it's. And. It's, some of them are certainly better suited.
Right, I think some of this maybe see shared, some of the shared streets maybe not in ideal conditions and to your point earlier about infrastructure.
Right, I, you know, in some of the, some of these areas, I know teller, teller has, um, apartment building on it. Um, Fern has an apartment building on, but it's, um, it's a collector's, a local street, so. Um, you guys good with four and a half for sure? Or.
Or, I think four.
I mean, where it's applicable, which is other consideration.
Oh, yeah. Or it's applicable if it don't work. With a general purpose.
Right. And all these others, all these sections, you'll see another. Uh, I threw another four. Something missed, but there's always a chance for another set of criteria related to these. That we can, I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware that other is just for. If you have anything else you want to contribute. Right, so which are we all on today, I have a major, three minor arterial, three with the exception of first street between. Uh, the road and press view and oak. We have a collector at time, a local three point five, a shared four. Right. Moving on. Um, I want to just say, uh, things that hopefully we should consider. The gaps and sidewalks and bicycle facilities, they create risk and then ability for users to safely travel to and from destinations. Constrained right of way, preventing construction, though. Though sidewalks or bike lanes. Uh, intersection design that may not account for pedestrians and bike riders, making it difficult to cross. So we don't have five points here, uh, we have four to the other. Before we start getting the numbers, what we do need to have is parcels with sidewalks connected. To shop, schools, shopping, parcels with no connected sidewalks and parcels between schools and or shopping where the buses pass. On an arterial street without a sidewalk. What I was trying to get to there is crossing how to G eight and dealing with west oak at the beginning of those. That's the point of the third one in all reality, those are both, uh, not so safe roads. Um, this gives us a little bit of room to consider the safety of those roads.
Well, I mean, should we even be scoring parcels with no connected sidewalk?
Zero.
Yeah.
Zero.
Well, zero, one. I mean, there's no. I mean, if you're looking at the safety of the pedestrians and bicycles.
Well, this, correct, but this also plays into what we discussed about the shared street, a shared street is not intended as a cycle.
Okay.
So is that fair, I?
All right, so I'm, if we are, if we're only talking about parcels on shared streets with no sidewalks. But if we're talking about parcels with no sidewalks on any other street designation, then that would. Certainly. Put a damper on.
So should we use the other to break that out when, uh?
Yeah.
Shared streets considered as sidewalks?
I mean, for streets that would typically have a side. Streets that have a designation where a sidewalk can typically be required, and I think that we can adjudicate that we can. Score that correctly, but where we have no sidewalk. On an arterial or in two street or some other streets that are. Being designated for a higher density of housing, then if the sidewalk would take that out of the, off the table, I think, or lower status. From a safety point.
Right.
Right, so. You're tied a number.
Also, the parcels with the, connected to the. Schools and shopping now would be high.
Yeah.
I would say that was five.
Up to with no connections, connecting sidewalks.
Then, would that be? Could, we would score that as long as it wasn't a. Shared street.
That should be.
Shared street would be the only thing that we would score with no sidewalk. I guess really what's going to happen is that it's just gets designated to a higher density development or certain pieces of the infrastructure that. Are absolutely have to be taken into consideration is that. In, in the shared street where you're going with a higher density, you're going to have to put inside one. You're going to have to put in, put in, uh, safety, you know. Mitigate the safety concerns that we currently have.
And then did the homeowners take that or?
Get all the kids, I mean, get all, um. So, uh. Are you guys, I know we've talked about board in a long time, uh, Nolan, remember Nolan, cases. Um, Nolan is the one, uh. Nolan was in, that was an Oregon case, went to the Supreme Court and Nolan was a California coast commission case with the Supreme Court. We cannot, um. Put stipulations on a building permit or a land use permit that do not have a nexus connected to that permit. So in the, the one in, um, I want to say it was a Beaverton. I want to say it was Nolan, they applied for a building permit to, uh, enlarge the size of their plumbing hardware store. City came back with, yes, we'll give you this permit under the stipulation that you put in a bike path and you also do this. Put in this other stuff, uh, improve the right perimeter behind your house. And they came back with those, there's no nexus that ties that to my billing. Uh, it went to the Supreme Court back and forth, they tried to say that, uh, the, uh. Bike path, bike and that path was because you're going to increase traffic, but like if that, that's, that's not the traffic they're going to create their funding source. Uh, so then he going was the, uh, California Coast Commission, same deal, they wanted to go to home. Um, but the, the city, I remember city it was, but they said you have to dedicate. This part of your property and put in a path so that people can access the beach. And they said that there's no nexus, my one residence did not tie to access for the public to the beach. Now, the reason I discuss this is because if one individual comes in with. One home building permit and they're in, in a crappy street, we cannot make them upgrade street. Now that gets a little more gray and turns to a different color as we're talking about large development, so. Um, uh, we do have conditional use permits and stipulations for. Um, there are places where we can use them where it increases the traffic by more than fifty percent. Um, when the proposal, it talks about traffic needs now, a traffic. They had T and A traffic needs analysis and it triggers for traffic needs analysis, as long as those triggers and all that stuff is clearly laid out. Larger, if a twenty apartment complex came in at the end of Elgin, for example. If that increases the traffic by one fifty percent, we could initiate a, have a need analysis. That's a situation where we can make them upgrade the street. So the point of that conversation is we have to be careful, the onesy twosies, we cannot ask them to do so, the larger developments we can. That makes sense?
Yes.
So I don't know if that really got us any answers, but there it is.
I think it should be five, three and one.
Well, I, yeah, I, I agree with that, the parcel not connected by sidewalk, particularly like on a local road, there's still. Who's able to walk on the shared street as well, so I'd have to agree with the three, the parcels. Connected sidewalk.
Okay, the five, your five, three, one, you know, I don't, just go away, none of people walk down commercial. Right down the middle of the road, well, yeah, anyways, moving on, um. Partial to the school shot up, so the third one, I have the one, yeah, the third one, I think it adjusts the safety. Uh, those two arterials. Um. So, we agree five, three and one, and other was, we're gonna, uh, consider shared streets as if they had a sidewalk. Do you want to make that a little bit five or do you want to go four or anything else?
I would think that would be. The three would be the same as a local street.
Right, um, one of the things that I do see happening, which is, um. If we were to go off just this criteria, we would have a patchwork, which is fully against. Good planning practices, and I'm gonna talk about the, 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 the area of the northeast section. Where you see so many breaks in the sidewalks, we can't just. Zone one partial, one zone, next partial, one zone, one, we, we, that's, that's bad, that's a bad, bad thing. So at some level, as we start looking at these maps, we should consider some type of. Average, especially in those areas. Um, if we're talking about commercial, if we zone everything towards the commercial one zone, that's perfectly acceptable, but to go off and put. The patchwork of zoning, that's four path, that's four planning and. Uh, we can't do any onesie or twosie, that spot zoning, it's spot zoning is illegal and it's against our ordinance as well, so.
Well, I would also say that if the sidewalks aren't connected to anything, then they're, they're not, I mean. If it's just connected to within the, the neighborhood, then it really isn't connected to anything, so.
Um, I guess, yeah, you're right on this.
Yeah.
It's, this is, you know.
Um, all right, just gonna check, I go five, three, one and a three on the other, and the other is shared trees are considered like sidewalks. Is that all correct? All right, next criteria is bus route, uh, according to most, uh, urban planning standards, the best walking distance to a bus route is considered around four mile. One thousand three hundred twenty feet, which simply translates to a five or ten minute walk for most people. Is often considered sweet spot where accessibility is maximized, not making the walk way too long for individuals. Um, this one, I think is a little easier, uh, we just have distances, uh. The scoring criteria is any parcels adjacent to the school, adjacent to Diamond Express. Within a quarter mile, half mile, greater than half mile and then. Waiters and three quarters, then again, another, oh, I'm sorry, sorry about that, everybody.
So that's kind of easy, five, four, three, two, one, that's what I was thinking.
Yep.
That's easy one, I, I, I have four, three, two, and one, any consideration for others such as, um, so. They'll be changing.
And are we? It's. Quarter mile, not to the bus route itself, but to the actual like pickup points.
Uh, bus route, I'm good with buffer, uh, buffer on the bus route and, um, pickup points for Diamond Express.
Not designated.
They're not, there's only, there's only one designated, that's cross raised and, now you see people using that, so, uh. Diamond Express is a wave down bus.
Oh.
You, you drive by, you wave, they stop you up.
No kidding?
Yeah, that's why you'll see a bus stop signs, other than normal by race.
Yeah, every time I've ever gone is to race because I didn't know how to get on it.
Yeah. Please don't.
It's, um. The churches are right on second, second and, um. Those will stop me.
Well, I, it was, if it's all second, second, um.
Yeah. You just always stop right there upon second before tell.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So that, that is the route and, uh, easiest way to map this one would just be, uh. Three twenty these distances is a buffer. Yeah, um, one caveat to this one. We have historically gotten, I've expressed change routes. Um, we have gotten, go to west her, I mean, this is one is alterable, but for states exercise, we just go with this. Um, right, so five, four, three, two, one, and nothing, and we're not going to take others. Right, another one that I heard is this is the parks. According to most urban planning standards, a walk will distance to a park for residents is considered to be half a mile. Uh, many cities aiming at having a process, accessibility to every resident within this range, over this in very cutting offs. There's an urban environment and local regulations. So again, we have, um, adjacent to park. Five, with four miles to the park. Uh, within half mile of the park and more than over half mile. And then.
Five, four, three, two.
I would say five, five.
Five.
Five, five, four.
Five, four. Over half mile.
Over a half mile, three.
Yeah, I do it three, three. That's not that far. Or she.
That's all good, but. So there are, um, two other. Sets of lands that have been designated as parks. They're not in this consideration because they have. Right, that was. Exactly, um. Right, uh, we have a distance perks. Right, neighborhood, available land per neighborhood. Uh, how do we define a neighborhood, this, and it online. Neighborhood is the median geographic area surrounding a family's place of residence. Founded by physical features, the environment such as streets, rivers, trains. Transports and both of divisions, are we all okay with this definition of a neighborhood? Or would you like to entertain it there?
This political division, see?
Um, like, um. In larger cities where each city council has a section.
Okay.
Like this, you can go then, um.
Yeah.
Sprint of that. Right, exactly, yeah, yeah.
And what do the numbers mean on our map?
Well, let's actually first, are we, we are, are we okay with that definition of a neighborhood? Yes, all right, so. Seems how there is no official place that says, this is your neighborhood, this is your neighborhood, using that definition. This is what I think neighborhoods, and it really looks like. And the numbers are just so like attractive of numbers and we have eight neighborhoods identified here.
It's not.
And.
What is the color coding, some yellow, some, um, red?
Red is vacant.
Oh.
Which one?
Red is vacant plan.
Okay.
And yellow is, has.
Residents on, okay, it's a bill, um.
And orange?
Well, we, are we talking about the color coding for the, um.
Neighborhood?
They've no neighborhood color coding means nothing, uh, the lock color, there, there's only two colors there to have significance, one is the yellow, which has been throughout. And then the red for the lock is a vacant lock versus a built one lock. Uh, and the definition of, uh, one caveat about vacancy, it comes from the tax successor's office. So if one person has two locks, when they use one for the backyard, their backyard is considered a vacant lot and is counted in this process. So if one person has two lots, when they use one for the backyard, their backyard is considered a vacant lot and is counted in this process.
Oh yeah, like my property on Second Street was three lots and they're all heated seven. My house sat on one and my backyard was on the other one and my driveway was on the other.
Then, then the one that your, your house will be considered to have built. So that's how, um, so everybody's aware of. Um, and there's a good, there's a couple of examples throughout town. Of where somebody just has two lots and they, the houses on one, the yard is the other. But then they might not be considered vacant, but again, we have to go off of some source. And that's some source for this is the access to the lot.
So we're, we're just gonna be guessing based on the number of reds, how much red we see there, that's going to be greater than thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent?
No, it's easy enough to do that. Easy enough to do math, but the.
We don't. We do have to do the math. I mean, how, in your, in your neighborhood numbering scheme? What is the percentage of vacancy versus?
Um, those are up for discussion, I'm just throwing a number out there to be honest. Uh, we're more than happy to, more than happy to change those numbers if you like.
No, no, I was just curious, so whether there was any other.
I didn't want to set it too high so that, so that no neighborhood got in there.
Is.
The best guess.
Um, is it like available acres or available like percentage of lots that are vacant? Or is it actual like acre?
It could be, it could be either or, you go, we should define that, so. Um, I think it should be acre, uh, reason being, there's a lot of lots throughout the entire community. Um, especially in, uh, maybe number three, maybe number five, maybe number four. There's plenty of lots in there that get subdivided again and again and again. Same with number one, number, they all have lots to be subdivided again, so I think acreage is our best safest answer. The acreage of available lots versus acreage of lots with built residential units.
And is that going to include? The whole city, like, because I know we've, we've taken. Things out because of like, um, like the grading. But are we gonna consider like that land as part of the percentage?
No, only, only what you see here, only what, uh, here's where we start. Uh, parcels with, um.
So it's not of all residentially designated lands, but it's on.
Just the one we see on page thirteen.
Page thirteen.
Yeah, that's our.
And then just going by, by these, this is the more vacant land. Be suitable, more, or higher, tighter to down.
The more vacant land is one opportunity for.
Just to meet those, our goal, what's kind of.
Uh, 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 well. The goal is to provide options for multiple, multiple types of housing.
So for this exercise, it seems like it should be five, four, three, two, one.
Any opposition to that? Anything for the other section, the others? Utilities, the goal utility criteria. The goal utility criteria is reduce need of infrastructure improvements for future developments. Um, as secondary benefit for compact air design to reduce the cost of maintenance for. Uh, we just sense that's supposed to save residents, my apologies. And, uh, return a greater, greater return investment to the city. Uh, this criteria applies to city provided water services in the right of way. Water, wastewater in the right of way or public utility adjacent to or home setting property, so what that means is. For this criteria, when you say there's eight inch watering adjacent to, that's why it didn't water main is either. In the streets, adjacent to the property or on the property. So if you have a street, you did, in an eight inch, that eight inch is gonna affect both sides of the street equally.
Are you skipping the fire hydrants one?
Um. So, no, that's coming under, that's coming under water, there's two, it's two to water.
Right, but you have criteria with equal sign, but. That's why it sounds. Utilities, water, distance, fire, from fire.
I think, uh, fire hydrant falls into water, and that's, that's why I.
Put it in there with criteria and equals on. Are we not rating it, that's my question.
We are rate, perfect, this, yes.
And you know, the shortest distance to the hydrant supports a larger development.
Want to speak to what a hundred feet of pose, um, length difference makes.
On all those houses fifty foot long.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Probably. We have a full crew out there, a man or about two minutes.
Right, I mean, I know there's pressure losses, um, I'm not sure what type of bows and that.
I don't know. Hundred foot of hose is gonna make that much difference in pressure of it, so I don't know. Less than three hundred feet, that means within a hundred fifty for your house. It's gonna be a hydrant.
Why is it a hundred and fifty feet if it's?
If there's a hydrant, if your house is in between two hydrant.
In between.
Well, obviously, it, to me, it's the closer you are to the fire hydrant, the more high density because. That's a higher potential of having a heart, right? So it should be five, four, three, two.
Well, I just don't know that three hundred's the right number to start at.
Is, is it the radius of the, uh? Is it just from the center now, or is it?
So aren't the typically, you got hydrants every two hundred feet or two hundred feet?
Um, there are some places, uh, where they go up to five, in a couple areas, some places are definitely lower.
They have the ability to run the water into a truck with pump, pump it and push it on.
But I think the majority of the, the fire hydrants are roughly two to three hundred feet apart.
Uh, it, it all depends on what you're doing.
In the, what we have right now.
There, there is no average, if you go, the yellow dots on the map is the hydrant location. The blue circle is the two hundred mark, the red circle is the four hundred mark, and the green circle is the five hundred mark. You all see those on there, just kind of give an idea.
Yeah, so that makes it easier.
I mean, the purposes of this, it seems like the closer you are, the higher the numbers.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just still wondering why three hundred is the.
Because that's what Rick, every term.
If you like to throw in a different number.
I would say that that should, seems to be roughly the spacing, and it's not consistent, but as you were saying, that at every. One point you're, that distance at least from one or the other, makes someone that see on the.
And, and again, it's solid fire hydrants, uh, same idea as the concept we talked about normal building growth.
I would, I mean, we have four categories here, so if we just made one more for it being two hundred feet and called that five, and everything goes down from there, then. I would just be really concerned. That I, I would love for any high density housing to be as close to a fire hydrant as possible.
So with the criteria they would have on the sheet, we could just start at four through two.
And four through two.
Yeah, but I mean, we can make up the criteria right now, so why wouldn't we add another one to just? Give higher priority to closer to a fire hydrant.
What I might be interested in doing, when you go more than five hundred feet skipping a number there, because then you're in a much broader range, so many drop it down. You know, five, four, three, one, or something, I mean, it kind of gets to that point.
Okay, yeah.
So is that what you think is over five hundred is not, is not, no, it is zero.
Good, good.
Provided to the areas over five hundred.
Well, that's the very, uh, great, so we might want to add another category to.
Okay, so other than the top at two hundred. We're giving that five, four, three, two, one, that's what I understand.
Fourteen, three, two, is it zero?
Fourteen, two, zero.
Oh, well, anything that zeros are, are throughout. Anything that doesn't, like, for example, yeah, um.
One equals zero? Does one, does one equal zero?
No, it's just, there's gonna be no math reminded, so these areas where you see where there's no, we. You still see the yellow residential, that's not gonna be, there's gonna be no math with that part of the equation, so it's essentially a zero.
He said the height is more than five hundred feet or whatever.
No, um, one hundred feet is the green circles.
Is more than five hundred feet, or is it five less? Three hundred, four, five hundred.
No, I see what you're saying, I, I think that, I'm gonna retract that statement, because. There would be mapping, it would be the one, sorry. You want to change that to a zero?
I think that's gonna be the same, five, four, three, two, zero.
Alright. The water being eight inch greater is five, the water makes six inch bigger, the water makes six inch. Before water made a four inch, three, two. No water present to the one.
Zero?
Zero. We do have ironically some one inch made mine, so. Yeah, so. So that was an easy one, five, four, three, two, zero.
Okay, yeah.
Wastewater, so wastewater is a little different. In that with water, you have the size of your mind is pressurized, it's three multiple sources, or three, or three reservoirs. So it comes from multiple directions, a loop is always better. Wastewater, on the other hand, is not the same story. So up in the northeast part, there's much less of a demand on wastewater. Because it flows downhill, and as it reaches the southwest. That southwest pipe has to collect everything in the entire city. So to use the same map or the same ideology just doesn't work. So this one unfortunately only has one and a two, which is wastewater presence, wastewater not.
Five and zero. Five and a zero.
Five and zero. And. So, um, in an email I sent out to you, I asked for more, uh, criteria than what we had here today. Um, I do want to talk about the one that I did get. And it was, can we use CCNR as criteria? Uh, House Bill two thousand one prohibits future CCNRs. That prohibits the housing, but did nothing to alter CCNRs retroactively. DLCD or Department of Land Conservation Development. And the state are not party or party to private CCNRs made by local governments. It would be, it would be a monumental task for cities to understand where CCNRs exist. What we described and whether they are actually enforceable in private legal action by the party of those CCNRs. The only reason DLCD recommends a local government to not consider CCNRs and formalizing zoning code provisions for middle housing. Or any other type of development to that matter. Um, this is from a, a fact sheet, a question and answer sheet regarding House Bill two thousand and one, from August sixteenth to twenty. So, um, that was the answer to, can we use them, um. I don't, I don't think we should. Uh, I didn't hear any other criteria before we go to, uh. Um, is there any other criteria that you all would like to see that was missed?
I'd like to see what this reveals.
Yes, it's, it's, we've got about maybe twenty hours of.
Do we want to look at distance to schools?
We only have one school.
Okay, yeah.
And we're small enough, I mean, yes, in, in larger cities, and that can be one. Um, but our size, I'm not so sure.
Yeah.
We can if you want, but I don't.
Well, we have, we have bus routes to take care of.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so, next step is, but the station of free science work, the maps. Will be, will end up in one map, but there will be a book and map to back it up, so every one of these criteria we discussed will be a done map. And then the process, so everybody's gonna view how this going, and about. Everybody's gonna view what sort of looks like for each end of the criteria. And then we'll also have the view what they look like when they're all stacked together. So the maps or the map created for this exercise will be generated in the next continuation of the process in March seventeen. That is our next steps, and that includes the other month.
Okay, so, Bishop, do, and if you have any comments that you'd like to add to the record? Or the recording?
One of the questions for. Correct, so what, what if this still yields the, a much larger. Portion than what our goal is. How my concern is, is going to the council with a recommendation that is much larger than what the actual goal is. And then having it. Justify why we're recommending, uh. Rezoning certain areas that. You know, don't necessarily need to be rezoned to meet the goal.
Right, so if we have three separate, three separate zones. It only makes, it seems to me like it would make sense to be a third, and third, and third.
So, my question is this, um. How much are three, does this stage we find a rest?
Seven acres, seven, seven, but. Trying to find with those seven acres though, is the hard part. Where do we put those seven acres?
So, so just to be clear, we're talking about two things here. We're talking about designating areas that would be supportive of increased development.
Right.
And. Following that, we would be discussing the actual zoning process.
Correct, that's your question report.
So where, 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 we are, when we have areas that are designated for a certain density. And we find our infrastructure lacking, because we have designated it for a higher. Then we have, um, an availability. than we have, um, an availability to fund the upgrades, right?
We do not have capital for water, anyway, sorry.
No, no, so we'll have to be cautious about where we put this.
I think we're buying more trouble if we're designating and then zoning two different things. I think the zoning should, or the designation should also be zoned with that is just for simplicity down the road.
Oh, that's how, yeah.
Because it's a, it's gonna be a, it could be a nightmare if we designated one thing and then zone it something different and then.
Right, so we can't designate it one thing and then zone it something different. The only way that they're not gonna match is if we designate it, do not follow up with a design. If we could say we're gonna designate X parcel, I don't know, R two, but then when we get to zoning process, we don't follow through with it. That's the only way that it would be different.
Okay.
Uh, state won't allow us to, uh, somebody applies for a reason. If that reason doesn't comply with the, um, man, plan and map, then you have to go back and adjust, uh, plan and map. So, yeah, so the only way that they don't match is to lazy zone it, or lazy, like.
Okay.
So back to the question of where we're required to add R three. Is that in HB two thousand?
The location is, no, the location is not, we are just required to provide more options for housing.
In which bill?
Uh, multiple bills.
Okay. Cause I think there's some concern with some of the language in one of the bills that says it's only for towns, uh, ten thousand plus or a thousand residents inside the Portland area, and so I wanna make sure that we're.
No, those, those do this.
So, I have another question. If somebody is going to build something larger and more they're also gonna have, add some, possibly, parking, etc., etc., so is, is there a standard lot size that would be required for that?
For which part?
Well, you can't put an eight flex on a, a.
Others are probably, none.
Right. So, what's the, what's the minimum size for it?
Minimum size doesn't, doesn't relate to the structure. So if somebody wanted to put up a four flex, they would have to, on property that was large enough to accommodate.
Building and property and.
It centers.
In the same case. And if they can do that in ten thousand square foot lot.
Then that's what they're trying to do, yes.
I have another question too. Have, have we moved this to our, our continuated meeting? Without following the agenda that was already set forth, moving into that continuation.
It will be not presented, that to me. Not comfortable with that, then.
I'm fine, I'm just trying to make sure that we're.
Right, right, so if, if the map presented is not something you have to come to with, you want more tweaks, then we just have to continually leave the meeting open.
Okay.
And set another work session, but I would hope that, um, we could move on to question number three. We don't have to accept as provided.
Hey. And you.
What's it?
You said the answer, no.
Brilliant.
Um. If somebody puts a four first. If I, if I remember reading, there were only required that off street property or.
Yes, that is one of my side of the state. Yes.
But we're presently, it's one per unit.
Uh, four bucks? We don't allow four bucks.
Why, no?
So we don't have a zoning. Basically, right now, it's, it's super unit.
Oh, okay. So that goes to one.
It's kind of, it's, it's set to order. Point five per year, per year, and for a four bucks above is the, um, recommended for the state, and I don't think that was enough.
I'm, I'm with.
Here are the legislative state legislation regarding, how do you have it, are you working on? It's in set, if we wanted to, I'm trying to. We all have to read it, so. This was in a this is part of our work sessions of, in July last year.
I'm okay with us not finally answering that question tonight, as long as that question is addressed, um, at our next meeting.
The question was, making sure that we're, we are, we are required.
Yeah, where, yeah, where the requirements are coming from, so we're clear on what exactly the requirements are.
Maybe you could just ship it out, maybe.
I think, I think everybody would like to know.
Well, I know, yeah. Give us the information so that we want to do more research on it beforehand.
Is that, does that? It might be illegal for us to do that.
No, we're not voting.
No, we're not. Oh, well, we couldn't reply to emails with a reply also.
Well, yeah, that, because that constitutes a meeting when you do reply all, but if he sends us all an email like you did today.
Okay.
That's fine, we just can't reply back.
Okay.
To all of you, you have to reply back just to him.
Yeah, yeah, for, for, for somebody to say, I want this criteria, and another person says, yeah, I love that criteria, and another person says, yeah.
And then it comes to me.
Yeah, okay.
But for staff to reach out to y'all at once, that's not a meeting.
Yeah. Um, but I would like that answered in public.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
We will say that, that, I think, in the original, and I think even some of the ones that are larger, we could finish it from even if we're not required to.
Yeah, but I'd like to know what we're required to do, we can decide to go beyond that, but we're, you know, knowing exactly what the framework is, yes.
Which one, three, yeah, which one we have to, have to, once we end up.
Yeah.
So then we're gonna set aside its time as an agenda item to address it. We'll set aside time as an agenda item to address that.
And it'll be a part of the staff report.
Okay.
And the staff report will be available, just like the previous staff report was.
Okay.
Same, same location.
Anything else? Well, it's going twice. Return.